The meeting is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I ask that everyone remain standing for a moment of silence, which I'll announce in a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are observing this moment of silence in memory of Holly Howard, who passed away on December 17th, 2023. Holly was first elected to the Board of Education in April 1995, and she was re-elected several times and ended her term of service in December 2016. Holly was a compassionate board member who was dedicated to the best interests of the students we serve. Our thoughts and heartfelt sympathies are with her loved ones. Please be seated. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices located at 760 Route 18, East Brunswick, New Jersey. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening, everyone. This is the reorganization of the Board, which is the official first meeting of the Board of Education, the reorganization of a Board with re-elected and newly-elected Board members. The first order of business is the appointment of temporary chairperson, so I ask for a motion as indicated on the agenda. Move by Mr. Winston, seconded by Mrs. Becker. Is there any discussion?
Sir, sir, question. Do we take roll for offense?
Oh. You bring up a good point, Mr. Sizmar.
Uh-oh.
See what happens when I sit in your seat?
Went right into the Pledge of Allegiance, and I apologize. So yes, thank you.
No, no, don't worry. Yeah, the Pledge of Allegiance, moment of silence.
Thank you.
Will the Secretary please call the roll?
We do need to ensure, that's right, I'm used to having that done to me.
He used to be asking you, yep.
So, so, in the interest of ensuring we have a proper roll call here, Mrs. Becker, Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mr. Cummings.
Here.
Ms. Gwass.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Lacks.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
And Mr. Winston.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum, so thank you for that, Mr. Sizmar. So, having addressed that portion of the meeting, the appointment of temporary chair, motion by Mr. Winston, seconded by Mrs. Becker, is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, may I have a voice vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so, next order of business is the administering of the oath of office to Board members and newly-elected individuals. So, we will begin with Mr. Cummings. So, Mr. Cummings, if you would join me front and center.
So, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Timothy Cummings.
I, Timothy Cummings.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do solemnly swear.
And I do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member.
For the office of member.
Of a Board of Education.
Of a Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
And partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All duties of that office.
All duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Are you sure you want to do this?
Yes.
I, Lori Herrick.
I, Lori Herrick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do solemnly swear.
And I do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member.
For the office of member.
Of a Board of Education.
Of a Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All duties of that office.
All duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Aren't you anxious?
No, I was saying, best for last or oldest for last, right? Just kidding.
Lori Lacks.
Lori Lacks.
You know the drill.
I know the drill.
I, Lori Lacks.
I, Lori Lacks.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do solemnly swear.
And I do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member.
For the office of member.
Of a Board of Education.
Of a Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All duties of that office.
All duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. The next order of business, the Chair will accept nominations for the Board President from the Board members in attendance, so may I have any such nominations? Mrs. Reese.
Thank you so much. I have a short little statement. It is my honor and privilege to nominate Lori Lacks to continue to serve as President of the East Brunswick Board of Education. Lori exemplifies all that is good about the East Brunswick School District and its Board of Education. During her many years of dedicated service, we have seen her serve honorably on every Board Committee there is, from curriculum to community programs, from policy to student services. Her breadth of knowledge of community and educational issues has helped guide the Board during many challenging times. She is exceedingly generous with her time. Sometimes I say to her, how do you do it all day? Often representing the Board of District at multiple community events per day and then leading the Board meetings well into the evening. Lori cares deeply about all our East Brunswick students, staff, and families, and she is proud to support our district in its efforts to provide our township's children with the very best education possible. In a time when our students face increased external pressures, Lori strives to make sure our students have as many resources as possible, so that they can ultimately excel in whatever career path they choose. Lori is a compassionate, forward-thinking leader who is the right person to lead this Board into the future. I am proud to call her our President and my friend. That is why I proudly submit her name for nomination as President of the East Brunswick Board of Education.
Thank you, Mrs. Reese.
My pleasure.
Are there any other nominations? Mr. Sizmar.
Thank you. For the benefit of the public, I want to explain why I am nominating myself for the position of Board President. Might seem weird to some. A few years ago, I made a motion, and it was seconded by Mr. Winston, to allow potential candidates for Vice President and President to be able to give a statement of what they were going to do with their goals and abilities, and receive questions in public from other Board members that would be voting for that person. The residents of this township placed us all here. They deserve to hear what our next Board leadership intends to do to move our district forward, from the intended leader. The Board denied our residents that opportunity and voted my motion down. I will focus on a few very important issues to me that directly affect our residents, which I feel current leadership has failed to handle correctly. This is a quantifiable measure of success, not any personal attacks based on feelings. Mrs. Lacks is a wonderful person, she's done great things on the Board, and she is a generous volunteer, but I have certain professional concerns. Back in approximately 2019, discussions began about maybe a need for a new high school and other large projects. We had a meeting, and there was post-it notes that were placed at the forum. In 2021, the need arose to implement temporary classroom trailers at Churchill School due to capacity issues and grade restructuring. This removed approximately 700 of our students from a permanent building starting in September of 2022. Delays by Board leadership at the time informing the Ad-Hoc Committee to address this massive project of a potential referendum for a four-year high school were coupled with delays to get the recommendation back from the Committee. In November of 2023, a similar public forum was done, except with QR codes this time, not post-it notes. To date, the timeline originally shown to Board members to go out for a referendum keeps getting delayed again and again. Maybe a referendum in 2026, 30 months to build after that? No estimations at all for potential impact to taxpayers. Board leadership has left our residents, including me, with many questions that lack answers, and I want to clarify here. Dr. Valesky, Mr. Juliana, and their team, they are administration. I'm speaking about Board leadership. The Board of Education needs to work with Mayor Cohen and township officials as partners to benefit our taxpayers. Several years ago, Mayor Cohen was invited to a retreat meeting with the entire Board, and we discussed upcoming projects with the mayor. It was positive. During the past few years of current Board leadership, our President has not facilitated a similar meeting with the mayor and the Board, and I don't blame Mayor Cohen for this, because let me share my experience with you with Mayor Cohen. It was maybe a year ago, I'm not exact on the time, I received a call from Mayor Cohen to sit down and have coffee. He expressed his desire to work together, and he stated he had discussions with other members at will, which I won't speak to. This past summer, I again met with Mayor Cohen, and Mr. Winston was with me at the time. I stated to the mayor, I do not represent the Board, I only represent myself, but we should have better relations, and any meeting that would be done would be coordinated with you, Mr. Mayor, and President Lacks at the time. The mayor reached out to President Lacks. The proper response by a leader would be to facilitate another retreat with the mayor. But instead, President Lacks, joined by other Board members, accused me in a public meeting of improperly meeting with the mayor. Our Board Attorney has reviewed my actions and determined that I did not violate any policies and was well within my rights to speak to Mayor Cohen. It's been a few months since then, and a true leader would have publicly retracted the improper accusations. President Lacks was the President at the time, she is not. Listen, folks, there are about 1,600 new apartment units/housing units planned for the north end of this township. The demographic estimates are projecting hundreds of new students coming into the district. We need to discuss possible needs for redistricting, funding for the increase in teachers and classrooms needed, discussions about any potential pilot funds. When are we going to work with the township? I could go on for quite some time, but I will spare you, because I can be long-winded sometimes. To my fellow Board members, here are facts, not feelings. Are you happy with the delays in a referendum that may reach $470 million while our student population grows every day? Are you happy with a President that hasn't facilitated a meeting with our partners, Mayor Cohen and township officials, with the entire Board? The Board President is the only person that can liaison with the mayor and speak to the mayor about meetings. If you're happy with the past two years of shortcomings, cast your vote. But the vote that you're about to cast should be for me, a true proven transformational leader, change the status quo for better results. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sizmar. Are there any other nominations from the Board? Seeing none, the nomination period is now closed, and we will proceed into vote for Board President. To review the process pursuant to the Board Bylaw 0152, voting takes place via paper ballot. I will be distributing these ballots in just a moment, so I'm going to provide instruction to the Board members. On these ballots, you will indicate who you are voting for of the two nominees, or you may abstain and not vote for any nominee. You will sign your name where indicated, and you will print your name where indicated. Fold the ballot, return it back to the Chair, and then, once all the ballots have been received, I will read the ballots and who voted for whom. So, are there any questions with the process? Okay? Nine ballots have been returned to the Chair, so we will begin with reading the results. A vote for Mark Sizmar by Jeffrey Winston. A vote for Mark Sizmar by Mark Sizmar. A vote for Lori Lacks by Lori Herrick. A vote for Lori Lacks by Lee Wu-Hang. A vote for Lori Lacks by Vicki Becker. A vote for Lori Lacks by Tim Cummings. A vote for Lori Lacks by Barbara Reese. A vote for Lori Lacks by Heather Gwass. A vote for Lori Lacks by Lori Lacks. Lori Lacks is the duly-elected Board President. Congratulations, Mrs. Lacks. Before turning the gavel over to Mrs. Lacks, I will also be proceeding on the vote for Vice President on this process. So, the instructions are the same as before, so at this time, I will entertain any nominations for Vice President. Mr. Winston.
Well, I was hoping I didn't have to make this particular speech based on the last vote, but it doesn't surprise me. We'll see if we have a second chance to make something right here. Leadership means different things to different people. For some, it serves personal interest, and politically, a stepping stone to other governmental positions. Others see it as a stage where they can create local self-popularity and gave self-importance and acceptance. And for some, leadership is embraced as a means to only act in the best interest of stakeholders, exploit opportunities for the betterment of the community, and mostly inspire others to reach goals that exceed their grasp. I nominate Mark Sizmar as Vice President, as being such an individual. Mark has demonstrated that he understands the vital difference between being a leader instead of a cheerleader. He consistently acts with intent, offering suggestions that evolve and elevate the district. He embodies the basic principle that measurement and accountability is not something reserved only for our students, but also Board of Education leaders, district administrators, and staff. He also clearly recognizes the differences between quantifiable facts and personal feelings. Mark has always led with the basic principle that he does not have all of the answers, but believes that most of the answers live in a group such as this and will be considered as long as there is a clear communication and a path of communication and approachability. These attributes currently are absent from this Board. These incredible personal qualities and behaviors which Mark exemplifies have come from a lifetime of achievement, leadership, and measurable, incredible experiences, along with results. When Mark Sizmar entered the Middlesex County Corrections Officer Academy, he was chosen by his peers as the leader, representing his class. Later in his career, he again was chosen as his class leader by his peers while attending the New Jersey State Police Academy. During his 26 years with the East Brunswick Police Department, Mark rose to the rank of Sergeant. He achieved a perfect score on his Sergeant's exam, not an easy task. Then, as Sergeant, he was chosen to assume the role of Traffic Commander, which is a highly accountable position typically reserved for an officer with a higher rank of Captain. His chief knew then what we know now, in that Mark had the leadership skills needed for such a critical need. Mark would later rise to the rank of Lieutenant before retiring after 26 years with the East Brunswick Police Department. Mark was then hand-selected to serve on both the United States Secret Service along with the U.S. Customs Task Force. In 2001, Mark was called upon to be part of the Task Force to investigate among the worst moments in U.S. history, the terrorist attack on the innocent in the World Trade Center, working with the federal government investigation unit assigned to that horrific event. While part of his work with the U.S. Customs, critical investigations for which he was involved resulted in large currency seizures tied to illegal activities. As part of that program, East Brunswick was awarded $1.5 million of seized assets, representing a percentage of the successes Mark directly contributed to and could be absolutely pointed to his work. Thank you, Mark. As gainfully employed adult, he returned to higher education, achieved a grade-point average of 4.0 in his undergraduate degree, and also a 4.0 grade-point average in his pursuit and successful achievement of his master's degree in Human Resources Training and Development at Seton Hall University. For East Brunswick, Mark was a dare officer in the East Brunswick School System for eight years. Students that knew Mark those days still refer to him as Officer Mark to this day, as my kids do, all of them. Mark's leadership and vision led him to form the very first Necessary Security Committee on this Board that exists today, and when collaborating with our head of security, devised a strategy that ultimately was implemented to arm the SSOs in our schools, recognizing that our top priority is our students and our staff's safety. His diligence has made the East Brunswick Schools the security model sought after by other districts and recognized for the program's excellence both statewide and nationally. Thank you, Mark. As mentioned, Mark, along with me, recognizes a gaping hole in the relationship between our township and our district, and as a private citizen, he met with the mayor to discuss ways to better working between the two governing bodies. This selfless and needed action, when the Board President learned of this meeting, resulted in a 45-minute berating by many members of this Board in public and elevated to unjustified accusations of ethics violations for which meeting privately with our mayor and, as mentioned, our own legal counsel later would dispel and reject any wrongdoing. One would expect leadership to correct the record and retract the famy comments, and sadly, but not expected, that never occurred. Mark knows that part of being a great leader is to remain humble and admit when wrong. That's what leaders do. This will be a difficult task to have Mark win and assume the seat is extraordinarily qualified to hold. What the public does not know is that the decisions of the President and Vice President position on this Board of Education are traditionally determined right after the election results are announced in November through phone calls, conversations, campaigning, deals, subset of Board members, by a subset of Board members that sit on this dais. This is why the same individuals appear in these seats regardless of failing track record year after year after year. It is part of a social club aspect of our Board of Education with $190 million budget. If there's another nominee, I appeal to Tim Cummings, Lori Herrick, and Lee Wu-Hang, among others, to join me and do the job that the voters in this town put you in the seat to do. Elect proven, qualified, and capable leaders that would benefit the stakeholders of our town and never prioritize the benefit of self or political interests. I hope that you see this to be a fortunate opportunity than it is to vote for Mark Sizmar as our Board of Education Vice President for 2024. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Winston. Are there any other nominations for Vice President? Mrs. Becker.
I would like to nominate Heather Gwass for Vice President of the Board of Education. Heather, you don't have to talk to Heather for very long to realize how intelligent she is, but that's not what just makes her a good Board member. She listens, she has great insight, she's compassionate, she's truthful, she has a background in education, she also brings to the Board her experiences as a parent in this district, and actually, this year, Heather has the unique perspective of having a child at the elementary school level and also at the secondary level, which gives her an eye to viewing what is going on in the buildings on an everyday level as a parent. Heather also understands that the Board of Education is a consensus-seeking group. That is what we're here to do. She works very hard to help bring about the consensus. Heather also understands that divisiveness and division is not an inherent, organic quality in any organization. It is created and enabled. Heather also understands that she doesn't use her seat or her time for self-indulgence and self-narratives. Just because someone says something doesn't mean it's a truth. We've all heard that saying, "There's three sides to every story." I would venture to say, in some cases, there's less. Just because someone says it at the top of their lungs with g- with great conviction doesn't mean that that's what happened. Heard some very interesting narratives and almost fairy tales tonight so far. I'm not going to spend our time discussing that. I am going to reiterate that Heather is a good leader. She understands what being a board member is and brings that transparency, commitment, professionalism, and maturity, which is why I would like to see her continue to sit in the very seat that she's sitting in for the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Becker. Are there any other nominations from the Board? Seeing none, the chair closes the time for nominations, and we will proceed to the voting. The instructions for voting are the same as they were for President. Please complete the ballots as they are passed around, and then fold them and return them to the chair. Nine ballots have been received. We'll proceed with announcing the votes. A vote for Heather Gwass by Lee Wu Hong. A vote for Heather Gwass by Lori Herrick. A vote for Mark Sizmar by Mark Sizmar. A vote for Heather Gwass by Vicki Becker. A vote for Mark Sizmar by Jeffrey Winston. A vote for Heather Gwass by Barbara Reese. A vote for Heather Gwass by Tim Cummings. A vote for Heather Gwass by Heather Gwass. A vote for Heather Gwass by Lori Lacks. Heather Gwass is the duly elected Vice President. Congratulations, Ms. Gwass. Mrs. Lacks.
It's traditional to hit the Board Secretary over the head with the gavel when you assume.
All right, I guess I'm moving on to number nine. Adoption of the New Jersey School Board Member Quoted Ethics. Oh, sorry about that.
We can, if you'd like.
Yeah, was it Vicki that you started this? Having each board member read one of these? I think I would like to continue with that. Mark, would you like to start? Number nine, we're going to go around the table, the dais.
I will uphold and enforce all laws, state board rules and regulations, and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes should be brought only about through legal and ethical procedures.
I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools which meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
I will confine my board actions to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help those to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them.
I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run.
I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action which may compromise the Board.
I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. But in all other matters, I will provide accurate information and, in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff, excuse me, to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools.
I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the Chief Administrative Officer.
I will support and support school personnel and proper performance of their duties.
Sure.
I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer and will act on such complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution.
Thank you. May I have a motion for this?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mrs. Reese. Will the secretary, oh, is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mr. Cummings.
Yes.
Ms. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Lacks.
Yes. Motion carries. May I please have a motion for the bylaws, policies, and regulations?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Becker.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Gwass. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mr. Cummings.
Yes.
Ms. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Lacks.
Yes. Motion carries. May I please have a motion for item number 11, meeting notices?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Becker.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Gwass. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. May I please have a motion for item number 12, official depositories?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Becker.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Gwass. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. May I please have a motion for item 13, Official Newspaper for Publication of Legal Public Notices?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mrs. Gwass. And I do have something, actually, for discussion on this. Can we please change the Home News and Tribune to the Home News Tribune for the record going forward?
Yes.
Thank you so much. All those in favor?
I have more.
Opposed?
Excuse me, more discussion?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, that's fine. Why are we not adding a online presence beyond the home news? So more of the public, which is feedback I've gotten throughout the year that they're unaware of the meetings and agendas? And I think we have a representative of one of those online media companies here today. I'd like to see either the tap and/or patch added. That seems to be the place where most people get their information.
You can absolutely do that.
We can do that. Do you need anything from us to do that or just tell you to do that?
You'd have to do it the next meeting. The next meeting, but you guys can absolutely advertise.
Okay.
Tap into or the patch.
Any's tap into and tap into? Tap into?
We'll look into that and bring it back to the Board.
Thank you. Very good point. Any other discussion, Mr. Sizmar?
Yeah, I was just going to say, great suggestion, Mr. Winston. I, no offense to the newspapers. I can't tell you the last time I got news out of a newspaper, so.
I think I delivered it to you. That's how long ago it was.
It was on parchment. But no, I love the fact that we're actually, you're going into the digital age with the online news sources. So, thank you for that.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and whereas these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session, the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows. Those items on tonight's agenda. The length of closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action will be taken. Now therefore, be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for only the aforementioned subject, and be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education hereby declares that its discussion of the aforementioned subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Moved by Mrs. Becker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cummings. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. We shall see you in an hour.
Okay, welcome back. Before we begin, I just want to let everyone know the reorganization Part II is going to be picked up at the next meeting. And I would like to entertain a motion to move the Good of the Cause for the Public to after the action items. Mr. Sizmar? Mr. Winston? Is there any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. And then we are starting with the superintendent's report. Dr. Valesky, I'm sorry, I caught you.
That's all right.
Drinking. On the job.
Thank you, President Lacks. Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to all the newly elected board members and new leadership. Looking forward to a great year. So, good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. The artwork on display in the boardroom this evening was created by students from Chittick Elementary School. The art teacher of these talented students is Gregory Barron. Tatiana McBride is their principal. On Wednesday, December 13th, the Special Education Department hosted a resource fair at East Brunswick High School. This family-friendly event was coordinated along with the East Brunswick Special Education Parent Advisory Group, also known as CPAG, to showcase dozens of community partners that support families in East Brunswick and Middlesex County. The event was fun and informative. Parents enjoyed connecting with experts in a low-stress environment. The providers included speech and occupational therapists, dental practices, special needs law firms, care management organizations, and buddy-ball sports programs. Middlesex County's Mobile Family Success Center was also in attendance, handing out bags of fresh groceries to demonstrate one of the many forms of assistance they provide to local families. Information regarding CPAG can be found now on the homepage of our website. Along with Lori Lacks, I had the pleasure of attending the Mu Alpha Theta's, that's the Math Honor Society, induction ceremony on Friday, December 15th. And this is one of the first induction ceremonies we've had on a Friday, and that's because the high school had been closed for repairs. So it was great to see the students and families there. Mu Alpha Theta is an organization comprised of a talented group of students who have been recognized both nationally and abroad for their combination of scholarship and service. Each of the 60 inductees have met the requirements for membership, including distinction and college preparatory mathematics, in addition to all other academic subjects, and have demonstrated the ability to work hard, show initiative, and of course, reliability. The principal purpose of Mu Alpha Theta is to develop strong scholarship in mathematics and inspire deeper enthusiasm for the subject. These members have the opportunity to share their talents with their peers as they volunteer their time to provide countless students with additional help in their mathematics courses. So that's greatly appreciated. The high school counseling department hosted alumni from the class of 2023. And we have a couple of parents here that have alum that already graduated and may have come back. And that was Alumni Day on Friday, December 22nd. The day started with a warm welcome from the administration and a time to reconnect with each other and the staff. Then 40 different class presentations took place where the alumni informed the seniors of their post-high school experiences, the application decision process, and how East Brunswick High School prepared them for their goals. There was a lot of discussion on dual enrollment courses, work opportunities, work-study opportunities, selecting a roommate, and trade and military experiences. And it was a valuable day for both the alumni and our future graduates. So we thank them for coming back. In sports, the Student-Athlete Advisory Committee selects two male and two female athletes to represent each school from the GMC who display sportsmanship, academics, character, leadership, and standout play from their fall athletic teams. Our four athletes were Caleb Osama, Sanjay Kadum, Ryan Berg, and Amaya Zorilla. Our winter athletes, two from each of our varsity teams, participated in the GMC Sportsmanship Summit at the Woodbridge Recreation Center in December. The athletes were selected by their coaches to represent East Brunswick Public Schools. The athletes share ideas with coaches and officials from their respective sports. Our athletes were part of close to 350 students from around the GMC who attended. Congratulations to our December High School Athletes of the Month. Students were selected for this honor by the coaching staff based on performance, demonstration of leadership, effort in practice, and of course, for modeling exceptional character. Just a reminder, Monday, January 15th, schools will be closed in observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Day. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's okay. I wanted you to get done because I like to get to to the real report.
The important stuff.
The important stuff. Right? What's going on? Chris, tell us all the good stuff at the high school.
Hi, everyone. In the past month, students have been very busy at East Brunswick High School with the band and orchestra putting on a great winter concert, if you guys were there, and the East Brunswick Drama Club having three successful nights of their drama production, She Kills Monsters. Senior Class Council also held their annual Mr. EBHS Pageant Show, which was a huge hit with all the students and parents. As we all come back from winter break, many clubs and activities are also beginning to pick up again, with the East Brunswick Chorus having their concert in the coming weeks, and Asian Club holding their Bubble Tea House Night next Friday for everyone to come together and enjoy different parts of Asian culture. And as we enter the new year, it feels like us seniors are finally finishing up our applications, and many have heard back from the early application rounds over the break. For myself, I'm honored to say that I received a letter of acceptance from Princeton University over the break. Thank you. And many other students have recently began receiving acceptances as well. So it's just great to see all my fellow classmates, all their hard work paying off. And yeah.
Congratulations.
Chris, you didn't say if you were going to accept or not.
Tell them what you're waiting for.
Only now for a better offer.
Yeah, I'm still waiting for Harvard.
I figured Stanford, they'd be too far away. As a mother, I like Princeton.
Yeah.
Good. That's wonderful. Terrific. See? Told you his report would be worth waiting for. Thank you so much. Okay. May I please have a motion for all of the action items on this evening's agenda? Move by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Winston. And then we're to call for discussion. The discussion is going to be for every item on the agenda this evening. And I just want to, give me one second. Because I just want to, not a question, just a shout-out. I'm sure you all saw the water filling stations at Memorial. And while my children are no longer there, they are alumni of that school. And so for Heather and for Leewu, I'm excited and a little bit jealous. But thank you, because I'm sure you're both active PTA members, so. Mrs. Becker is very excited.
I just have a question about Dr. Valeski. It's under the facilities agenda, item one, the approval of use of a drone to assist in monitoring the progress of construction of the softball field hockey field at the high school. So my question is that we've undergone many construction projects in the past. Why are we using drones for this one?
Yeah, just, that's a good question, Mrs. Becker. And the board actually has a policy about the operation of drones. But for this purpose, and I'll let Mr. Giuliano weigh in as well, because he has a more intimate knowledge of it. We heard very clearly from the community and the board about when we engage in projects of this nature, about giving you updates. And the drone, with its capabilities, would allow us to give the board photographic updates and allow to share it with the community about progress on this important project. So, Mr. Giuliano, do you want to?
That's exactly right. And it will also provide an added level of oversight for our engineers. Viewing things from a bird's eye view while construction is ongoing gives a much better, more comprehensive view than, you know, just eyes on the ground as the work progresses. So this is actually a plus in many respects.
So this is being done in response to community feedback that they'd like to be appraised about?
We heard clearly when we announced that we were going to do the renovations to the field. The community was very supportive and very happy that we were about to do that. And questions we've entertained from individuals are about, when is it going to be done? How quick is it going to happen? Because as you remember, we took the trees down. That stayed that way for a long period of time, and people thought progress wasn't being made. So this will allow us to give both the board and the community some updates. And I think it's important for anybody who doesn't have a copy of the agenda in front of them to understand that we are not operating the drone. That is being handled through our engineers. And it is an FAA-certified drone pilot who is going to be doing that. That's under the contract of the engineers. And they won't be overflying any of the residential areas. It's just isolated to the work that they're doing at the field.
Thank you. Out of all the things I thought, I didn't think of that. I think that anything that's going to be able to provide us and the community with feedback that we want in real time is good. Could you just remind us what day we're aiming for? Or what we're being told will be the approximate completion date of this project?
Mrs. Becker, I will bring that to the next board meeting. I don't have the project schedule here.
No problem.
But I will be able to share that at the next meeting.
Thank you.
I know, I know. Barbara, Mark.
Yeah, sure. And just piggybacking on that question about the drones, can it be done during off-hours, like in a typical modern school? Is that the plan, or does it have to be during?
It will be done while construction is in progress. It won't impact any students.
Okay.
This is in the area where construction is taking place, that is fenced off. No one is permitted there except construction workers.
Okay. Mark, was?
Yeah, I just wanted to add emphasis on the last line to piggyback off you, Dr. Valeski. No cost to the district.
Correct.
So it's something that helps our construction, and there's no additional cost to the taxpayers. Awesome. Good job.
Mr. Hong?
So the same item. My concern is, who is going to pay the insurance? So would this person carry his own liability insurance?
Yes, they are fully insured, and we have the insurance certificates in anticipation of this moving forward.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Any other discussions? Okay, before I ask the secretary to call the roll, I just want to remind any board members who might be under financial services to abstain. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker?
Yes, except abstain on Board of Education, item one, minutes, December 14th, and item two, minutes, December 27th.
Noted.
Thank you.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Ms. Wos?
Yes, but abstaining on Board of Education, item two, minutes, December 22nd.
Noted. Mrs. Herrick?
Yes, but abstaining on Board of Education, number one, minutes, number two minutes, and under travel report, number nine, abstain as well.
Noted. Mr. Hong?
Yes, abstaining on Board of Education, item number two.
Noted. Mrs. Reese?
Yes, but abstaining on Board of Education, item number eight, travel report, P2403265.
Noted. Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Lacks?
Yes, motion carries, bringing us to the Good of the Cause for the Public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of such comment, the board should provide a period for public comments at every meeting of the board. And those wishing to speak are given three minutes. The board secretary will be keeping the duration, keeping the time. And I also always like to remind people that this is your time to speak to the board. Please don't take our silence or not answering any questions as not caring about the issues you bring up. And anything that needs further follow-up will be directed to the two ladies in front. You can leave your information, contact information with them. That being said, is there anyone tonight wishing to speak? If you could come on up and if you could give your name and address for the record before you all speak. Thank you.
Okay, hello, is this okay?
Yes.
All right, okay. My name is Atika Gunja, A-T-E-K-A, last name is G-U-N-J-A. I live in East Brunswick. You need my address, Lori?
Yes, you need the address, correct?
Okay, 68 Berkshire Way, East Brunswick, New Jersey. Okay. Just want to say, good evening to all the esteemed members of our Board of Education and Superintendent Valeski. I want to start off by thanking each of you and all of those who came before you, particularly the late Dr. Joanne Magistro, for your hard work and dedication to making education the cornerstone of our community. My name is Atika Gunja, and I am a proud product of the East Brunswick Public Education System, as are my three sisters. We started in Lawrence Brook and went all the way up to top graduate schools. Thankfully, we are all doing well in our professions, and we owe much of our success to our upbringing in East Brunswick. We pride East Brunswick on its diversity, inclusion, and the respect that we all have for one another in this community. May that never change and may it only get stronger. The public education system is the reason why I decided to return here to raise my child. I am coming here tonight to speak about a very difficult topic, but one that we can no longer stay silent about. For the past three months since the tragic events of October 7th in Israel, the world has been witnessing the horror that is unfolding in Palestine, where 2.3 million besieged civilians have faced relentless bombardment, forced displacement, expulsion, extermination, and now starvation. To date, there have been over 30,000 deaths, two-thirds of them women and children, and thousands more under the rubble, 56,000 injured, hundreds of healthcare workers, journalists, and humanitarian aid workers killed, schools, hospitals, ancient churches and mosques bombed, thousands illegally detained in Gaza and the West Bank, including children, 1.9 million internally displaced persons, and over 25,000 tons of missiles, more than an atomic bomb that has been dropped over a 141-square-mile area, roughly the size of Philadelphia. Now, 23 UN and NGO agencies have found that the entire population of Gaza, 2.3 million people, are facing food crisis and are at imminent risk of famine. I'm just going to skip forward because I think three minutes might be, this might be too long for three minutes. And yet, this is a humanitarian catastrophe of epic proportion that the world has not seen before. And yet, we are not talking about this in our schools. Why is this? This is strikingly at odds for an advanced school system like East Brunswick, one in which I thankfully learned the history of the Holocaust in depth. I learned about the plight of the Jews during World War II, who similarly faced dehumanization, mass expulsion, and extermination. I learned about the atrocities of Pol Pot in Cambodia, the genocides of Rwanda and Bosnia-Herzegovina, the grave injustices
Ten seconds.
to the indigenous people of America and the founding of our country, and mass enslavement of Africans leading up to the civil war. I just want to say, the silence is what I'm really concerned about and what I feel like is making us all unsafe here and very uneasy. So I need you guys to act on that and to stop being silent about it.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gunja. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the board this evening? Sure. Come on up and state your name and address for the record.
Three minutes, right?
Three minutes.
Okay, cool. I'll start. It's time we're over here, too. Hi, I'm Shazad Chakir, 8 Lantern Lane. I didn't come here to speak about Palestine, but I'll add a little bit to it. So I share the same concerns as she does. And when people say, hey, this is a foreign issue, this is over there, not over here, it's really a US issue, if anything else, because I feel like our voice in this country, when we say 30,000 people are dead or killed, not a lot of actions being taken place in our country. In fact, we're actually silenced. You won't hear this about a lot of this stuff on the media. Like, the only way you're really hearing about it is through social media. That's the only way people even have a voice. If you even see places like Facebook, Meta, they're all silencing all this stuff. In fact, they're taking down a lot of these posts. So the only way we can make changes in this country is from a local level, like such as even East Brunswick. We need to let our, what's it called, our mayor know, so we can let our governor know, to let our representatives know, and work our way up there. But, yeah, good. That's all I really want to talk about Palestine. But the actual reasons I'm actually here today have a bigger concern, and unfortunately, and I haven't been in too many Board of Ed meetings, so I'm not sure if discussions have happened in the past about this. And unfortunately, I don't come with any solutions. But it's a conversation I just want people to have on the back of their mind. And it's really the drug issue in the East Brunswick schools. I understand that vaping is something that you guys are pretty much on top of. I heard that the bathrooms are being watched more often, which is a great thing. And I love the fact that action is being taken on there. But like, I actually started hearing about things that were even more disturbing, where people are actually getting drugs such as LSD, meth, and even cocaine now in the schools. And something like that really, really disturbed me, hearing about this stuff. Because, see, one of these children, take a hit of meth, their life is over. That's something that is addictive. They're always going to want that high again. And I'm just really concerned over the children. So I know I come with only a problem, no solution. But I just want that conversation to be on the back of people, like, your minds, so at least we can possibly come up with a solution. And the biggest problem is, guess what, we swap one down, I feel like there's always another issue. Oh, you stopped them from vaping, they're going to pop some gummies during school. You start looking behind the toilets for drugs, guess what? They're just going to do a hand slap, and there's a transaction. You don't even see it. So I just feel like it's a cat-and-mouse type game with this. But at the end of the day, we got to just look after what's best for our children. So I just want to kind of throw that out there to you guys. I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chakir? Come on up and state your name and address for the record.
My name is, is that good? My name is Zina Zuri. I live at 339 Danbury Court. I just want to speak up in support of what was mentioned in regards to Israel and Palestine from the last two speakers. I'm asking that we collectively come together as a board and a school district to support our students. My son is a sophomore at the high school, and he showed me some very disturbing Instagram posts that his classmates are posting. So I know we're not having a conversation out loud, or the student, but the students are having conversations, right? So we need to come together to support the students, to make sure that they're getting the correct information and they're learning about what's happening. It was a very disturbing image that has been shown on the media of men that were stripped down and tied and blindfolded. And they said, the image said, they don't call it the Gaza Strip for nothing. So this is something that another student is posting to their Instagram that my son is then seeing. So, and I think back to other times here. I grew up in East Brunswick. I graduated class of '03. I remember back to 2020, when George Floyd was murdered. I remember a statement came out from the district. There was a bunch of education resources that went out. I remember 9/11. I was in school during that. And I remember counselors were brought in. We had the guidance counselors, but they also brought in specialized counselors. There was education that was happening. And so I'm asking us to come together and provide that for what's happening now, for our students now.
Thank you so much, mister. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak? Yes, sir, if you could just give us your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Mohamed Saqib. And I come, my address is 406 Ryder's Lane. As a resident who has been through the entire school system, racism, bigotry, ignorance has went widely unnoticed in our community. In high school, we had a class called genocide, where we learned about the Holocaust, Iran genocide, the Armenian genocide. But not once did we talk about the Nakba, the Bengali genocide. The ongoing genocidal persecutions that are happening all over the world against Muslims, not just in Palestine, but also in the US. In 2019, in this high school, in East Brunswick High School, we had a student who was, had her job taken off, and the school punished the victim of the hate crime. We are seeing a rise of hate crime around us today, including vandalism of synagogues, mosques, and attacks on rabbis and imams, including in Newark, where a person was murdered after opening the mosque at the fudger time. Hate comes from ignorance. And as an educational system, it is your responsibility to reduce ignorance among our community. And it should never devolve into violence. For Muslim and Jewish students, we are often left out of the many school programs because we are not accommodated for our food choices, our clothing, our prayer times, our religious holidays, or our own, learning about our own history. This does not increase the amount of study work or takeaway from time school, because those who are not accommodated can't. They don't have the accommodations to go out to school. And because of that, students and teachers are expected to continue their curriculum while some students are lagging behind. This only increases more stress and decreases the entire grades for everyone else. This is about fairness, about building a safe and accommodating environment for a diversity of races, cultures, and religions. I believe a great start with this would be having a Muslim Heritage Month. We need to have more assemblies, more events discussing the different cultural aspects and integrate them into our curriculum as much as we learn about other heritage. And we also, well, actually, I'm it. But, yeah, we should definitely reach out for more progress about integrating these cultural aspects into our curriculum. And we should have silence for the Imam that was just recently taken away, because that has a large effect on a greater creative community in, and especially in East Brunswick. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chakir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the board? Yes. State your name and address.
Hello. You need a name?
Yes, please.
Matthew Libeci, M-A-T-T-H-E-W-L-I-B-E-C-C-I. I am not of East Brunswick, but I am of East Windsor, like 30 minutes from here. My address is 233 Windcrest Drive, East Windsor, New Jersey. I am also here standing in support with my comrade, Atika, in support of Palestinians, but specifically because this is a Board of Education meeting, it is important to talk specifically about that exact purpose, education. I have been a photographer. I have been a street field journalist for three months now, since the events of October 7th, documenting and spreading the awareness of the activism that is happening on the ground in New Jersey, in New York, Philadelphia, and hopefully in Washington DC on January 13th. And one of the things that has become very apparent is the very real threat of silencing and threats to students, be they either in elementary school, middle school, high school, or in college specifically, which a lot of students I have worked with. I myself grew up in Monroe Township, where I, half my friends were from East Brunswick. So my roots are just as much here as they are anywhere else, even though I am in East Windsor, which is a town over. It is important to note that I was lucky enough in my education to be taught about Holocaust and genocide, the Armenian genocide. And I was taught by a Jewish teacher, Ms. Schwartz, that from that moment on, I did a lot for understanding the very real threats of fascism and the very real threats of suppression and how genocide slowly digs itself into everyday life and eventually causes us to not realize the actions that humanity causes to other people. And one thing that is very threatening is how that fascism is slowly being rooted within our educational systems. Rutgers University specifically has had their Students for Justice in Palestine chapter recently revoked. Those students have been silenced, and they have not had their voices heard, even though they themselves have also had threats. And it is also very important to understand that it is not just Palestinian students, it's not just Arab, it's not just Muslim students, because a lot of what's happening is they try to pin a Muslim problem against a Jewish problem. And that's not how it is. It's a humanitarian problem. I have been to Jersey City. I have been to the East Brunswick Town Hall meeting. And a lot of times, people keep having this dividing line, and that's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to just simply educate people on what is happening because it is affecting Jewish students, affecting Palestinian students, affecting Arab, Muslim, Christian, Buddhist, Taoist students, anything. It doesn't have to do with religion. It's a humanitarian thing. And it's very important to understand that even if you think your children are not talking about this, they are talking about this. It's all they're talking about. And I have heard from every age range, and I have interacted with them and everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Libeci. Is there anyone else? Yes, come on up and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kader Nazaruddin. I'm at 16 Van Winkle Road, East Brunswick. Green Wing, everyone. I'm here on behalf of my two kids who go to East Brunswick School for third grade and fifth grade. I'll start off by quoting like two incidents that happened to my kids directly inside the East Brunswick school environment. November last year, my third-grade daughter at Frost Elementary November last year, my 3rd grade daughter at Frost Elementary was shown an ASMR video, which is generally meant for relaxation, but not this one. This was a video of a turtle chomping on a map of Israel and Palestine, eating away Gaza and the West Bank. This was not relaxing for my daughter. She was very disturbed, as she went home and told my wife about this. Secondly, yesterday, at Hughes, my 5th grader was asked by another student if he was Muslim. When he said yes, he said, "All Muslims are evil. Go Google it." Our children receive a lot of hate in the school environment. They are not prepared to handle that. Many of these go unreported. We need to make sure our school environment is safe for everyone, kids of all faith. Our children are not like, equipped to handle such hostility. Even those who are probably mature enough or old enough to handle these are afraid, especially the Muslim students. So, I'm requesting the folks in this gathering to do something about the hatred against Muslims, or people of all faith. It doesn't matter if it's Muslims or Jewish, we need to stop the hatred. That's all. Thank you.
Aram Shacher, 8 Lantern Lane. Good evening, Board of Education members, Dr. Valesky, and all the amazing staff members here at East Brunswick. I'm going to read Offa Tika's statement, because she didn't get to finish, and she had some really good points, but I'd like to reiterate what this gentleman over here said. I'm not going to reiterate the situations that have occurred in the East Brunswick Township, but a lot has occurred, and there's been no action. Kids are not upfront about talking about it, because they feel really uncomfortable, and that's a problem. All right. So why, when this is happening in real time, are we not actively learning and teaching about this? And why are we acting, why are we not acting to stop it immediately? Last week, I introduced a ceasefire resolution to the East Brunswick Township Council and Mayor Cohen. This is being done throughout the town and city councils in America, in order to apply pressure at the state and federal levels to pass an immediate and permanent ceasefire and unrestricted humanitarian aid to Palestine. Today, I am coming to the East Brunswick School Board to plead with you to stop being silent on this issue, to start teaching our students about what is going on, to give the staff, students, and families the support we desperately need. If the school board truly provides itself in acceptance, understanding, and unity, as Superintendent Valesky stated in his official statement October 17th, if you're truly working tirelessly to enhance physical security for every student, then we need you to start talking about this and educating about this. I am not a professional educator, so I cannot advise you how to effectively navigate through these crises. I know that during 9/11, extra counselors were provided for staff and students. I know during the unfortunate hijab incident in 2019, the township provided, assembled for public discourse, and similar community forums were held during the George Floyd murder and Black Lives Matter protests. I know there are sophisticated systems in place to educate and support our staff through this tragic time, and in turn, they can systematically educate and support our students and families. We badly need it, we are suffering, the children are suffering. They need guidance about how to deal with their emotions, how to process the grief, how to use social media responsibly during this time, how to deal with bias, crimes, hate speech, and racial profiling. The horrific images and stories we hear on a daily basis on our screens are not normal for any of us to see, let alone children. While we teach them to look away and ignore the plight of others, though they are on the other side of the world, will we leave them and our families to navigate this crisis on our own? Or will we teach our children to pay attention to injustices, to fight for freedom, equality, and peace, and to feel a part of the change we want and need to see in the world? These are some of the looming questions I want this board to consider, and then I want this board to take action. Sorry that I was going 100 miles an hour. But I'm going to go back to what I actually wanted to talk about. Our children live in an era of social media. They can decipher between actual images and AI images. They're witnessing some of the worst atrocities that they've ever seen. My son said they're some of the worst that he's ever seen, worse than a horror movie. Whether that means providing additional support, or counseling, but we need to provide something. I remember post 9/11, I was not visibly Muslim, but I was told to go back where I came from, and then I was also called a terrorist. That year, I submitted an application for the Islamic Club of East Brunswick, because that's not what my faith represented, but my faith was being attacked globally. Anyways, no problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Aram. Yes, please come up, state your name and address for the record.
Dr. Wahid Bajwa, 47 Egger Street. Good evening, all the gentlemen and ladies present here, and also the Board of Education. Happy New Year to everyone, and also congratulations to all the re-elected and newly-elected members of the Board of Ed. I am an educator by profession, and I just want to, I'm not going to ask anyone about, you know, what statement you should put out, or what position you should take, whether it's, you know, pro ceasefire or non-pro ceasefire. But I just want to iterate that we are raising our next generation in our school district, and we need to give them the tools to interact with each other, be able to engage in difficult conversations, without being under the fear of labeled either Islamophobe or anti-Semit, unless they cross those boundaries. And if they do, then they have to be taught in the right manner. If we don't teach these things in schools, where would we? I'll just bring up a simple example. My daughter, I have three children in the East Brunswick School District, the youngest, the oldest one moved on to college. My middle one, she showed me a passage or piece that she was writing on this conflict, which I thought was a very balanced, it was, you know, she didn't have to, but of course, it started from the discussion of October 7th, and, you know, how that is reprehensible and all that. And then she went into historical aspects, and then she asked me, "Do you think I will be penalized by my teacher if I submit this?" Because sometimes, when we don't say something, that is saying a lot. So, when we don't say that you have the freedom to, this is the place where we will engage in ideas, the marketplace of ideas, in a manner that brings our communities together, that brings kids together from different faiths. If we don't give them that encouragement, what will they grow out to be? They will grow out to be people who just post abhorrent and really, really vile stuff on social media. So, we have to take a stand here, we have to teach them how to engage in difficult conversations. We have to teach them that no matter what you engage in, you will not be penalized. And only then will raise children who will be the beacon of peace in this world.
10 seconds.
And otherwise, will raise children who will just keep on being, posting vile stuff on social media. So, I hope you will take some action. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bajwa. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the board this evening? Yes, no?
No.
I just want to make sure. Okay. See, I'm going to then close the public portion. I thank everyone for your comments tonight. As I said at the beginning, we do not address things that have been said, but I just want to task you with something. It's very difficult, because the Board of Education, we're not global politics, we're not even local politics. We're a Board of Education, our job is to run, make sure that the district is run well. But, there is something I would like to ask Dr. Figaro and Dr. Valesky to do, because, give kids the tools to interact with each other. Dr. Bajwa, that was one of the things that you said, that is something I think that we can do. So, I would love to see if there's any kind of reporting that can be done on how we are helping to facilitate conversations. As I said, we can't do anything about the politics of the world, but we can do things about making sure that our children are having conversations and they're not penalized, because every student in this district needs to feel safe in their person, and their beliefs, and their politics, and anything. So, if it's possible to do something, I'd love to know what we're doing in terms of, I don't know if it's assemblies, or if it's, I know we have a lot of great programs, but if you could give us a little bit more about how we're helping these children to interact?
We could, we could give the board and the community a report at another board meeting. But if I could, I would like to assure the members in this forum tonight, and people watching this recording, a couple of comments were made about the mobilization of guidance support and supporting our students. We did that, the actual, the next day, when the first school day after this event happened. Dr. Figaro and I had a conversation, they, those individuals report directly to him, and we mobilized them to provide, you know, direct resources to students. But we do acknowledge that students do not always share. And so, that's, that's one of the challenges that we have, is that students sometimes don't want to talk about certain things. So, we heard some very impactful things tonight. So, we'll, we'll prepare a report for the board and actions that we plan to take.
That's the only thing I-
And some of the actions we've already taken, that we will share with the community.
The only thing I ask is that we follow up on the portion that falls within our control. This is bringing us to new and our old business community reports, information items, and for the good of the cause for the board. I want to say congratulations to Tim and Lori, and myself, for getting pre-elected. Lori, we welcome you to the fund. I think you'll be a wonderful new addition. Thank you to my fellow board members for giving me another year in this seat. And a lot of things were said about leadership, the only thing I can say is a true leader is someone that finds a way to take division and, you know, find a way to coexist. And we are role models for our kids out there, and if we ask them to be able to get along, no matter what their beliefs are, then I think that we should be able to do the same on this board. So, going forward, that's what I'm hoping for in the new year. I think we have some great people up here that are all volunteers. We always tell people that, you forget that we have a day job, and then we come here on our evenings off to do this for the betterment of the community. So, I do applaud everybody that I serve up here with, and hopefully, I will make you proud this year. Is there anyone else? Mrs. Becker.
First of all, I also want to welcome Lori, and congratulate Tim and Lori again on their reelection, and Heather and Lori on their roles as leadership. I wanted to first start off with something nice and exciting for our town. The Recreation Park Advisory Board had a meeting right before winter break, and there's a new recreational arts program that's going to be called the East Brunswick Symphony Orchestra. And this is going to provide high-quality musical performances, but more important, educational experiences. It's a volunteer community orchestra, but it also features professional-level players. And there's going to be music education for adults. Ensembles and classes will be open to adult musicians, 18 years and older, of all skill levels. And both residents and non-residents are welcome to participate. And the premiere performance is Sunday, January 21st, at 3 o'clock, at the EB Community Arts Center. And I believe this is a center that holds two, approximately 200 people. If somebody knows otherwise, please feel free to correct me. So, I would just urge you, if you want to get tickets, to go online and do it. The 21st will be here before we know it, and there are a limited number of seats. Then I, I would be remiss if I didn't say something about our moment of silence for Holly Howard at the beginning of the meeting today. Holly was one of the people who talked to me about serving on the board in 1999. She became my mentor, and more important, she was my friend. She will be deeply missed. You can't quantify what Holly did for our district, and the students, and staff in this district. She had the most amazing generosity of time and spirit. And she will be missed.
She will be missed.
Thank you.
Holly taught us a lot about being good board members. Holly was a born leader, and a kind soul, and brought ice cream to negotiations meetings when we had 12-hour meetings, so.
In the movie.
In the movie, yes. She's irreplaceable. Mr. Hung.
So, I want to welcome Lori to this volunteer body. Everyone sitting here has a family, sitting here have their kids or own children, have his or her daily job. Make up your mind to join, it's a big step. And getting elected is another step. But, education is a dynamic field. Being a board member is a very challenging, getting elected to a good board member is just a very tiny initial step. And I really hope you can take advantage of NJSPA, Middlesex County School Board Association meetings, resource, and try your best to learn, let's work together, grow together, and serve our student together.
Tim.
Ditto. Dig it. I want to give a quick shout-out to Mr. Hannes and the team at Churchill. I attended last night for my 7th grade son, the Rising 8th Grade Meeting, which was just incredibly informative, and just, it's such a pleasure to sit there and witness the expertise that, you know, we are surrounded by within our district, all the teachers, the administrators, all the members that were involved in that. You know, they just bring such, such, the expertise, but also the care and the compassion to their roles as well. And I just want to highlight that, and say, one of the things that I took away from that as a parent, with three kids in three different schools here in the district, is that I, myself, don't, I underestimated the usage of going on the website and looking for information on the school, at the schools particularly. I just don't do that enough, but learned that there's a heck of a lot of information there, and would really encourage other parents to also take advantage of that as a resource when you're looking for information. I'm going to be doing more of that, and just wanted to share that as a takeaway. But, again, big shout-out to that team, they did a great job.
Thank you. Ms. Herrick.
Thank you. So, I wanted to thank all the board members and administration. You've all been so welcoming and supportive as I've gone through my transition. So, thank you, and it's been nervous, but I look forward to working with everybody. So, thank you.
How do you feel about changing your name?
Well-
Just kidding. You get to be young Lori, don't worry.
I was going to say, why would she change her? Oh, you mean Lori.
That's okay. You know what? We have the era of Mark I and Mark II, so we can know it.
Yeah, but now we have Lori II. We have Mark I, Lori II.
That's right, that's right. And she spells it the right way and everything.
Maybe that's the chair.
Yes, yes. Okay. Ms. Gwes.
I wanted to echo what Ms. Locke said, and thank the board members for their support. I hope to be able to meet everyone's expectations in leadership this year. I'm fairly singular of focus when it comes to education. I just believe that it is a lot of volunteer hours, and there are so many volunteers within the district. I mean, we talk a lot and remind people that we're volunteers, but I've spent a lot of PTA time in the last few weeks, and there are just so many people who are actively giving back to the school, whether it's here to speak up for their students, or in this capacity, or, you know, just all kinds of parents in the school, all trying to do the same thing, which is, I just think our singular focus is to nurture our children in the best ways to become the most comfortable, competent adults that they can be. And part of that is creating a very safe environment. So, I do hope we are able to, in leadership, focus on that this year, and help everyone come together towards our goals as a group. I want to welcome Lori. Congratulations, you made it through the first one. And congratulations to Lori and Tim. I am honored and excited to serve with you again. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to remind you to get me your committee request, and then I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by the only mark. Second. Second by Heather. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Thank you so much. Good night, everyone. Happy New Year.